I realize I'm lax in finding my intro here. There it is. All right, so it is six o'clock and good evening. My name's Tara Rickby and I'm the Chair of the Canora Planning Advisory Committee. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Advisory Committee for April the seventeenth, twenty twenty four. That's what happens when you're retired. As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty Three lands, which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts. Let these principles guide us in our decision making. So prayer to calling the meeting to order. To all members of the public, please send a private message to the Secretary Treasurer and inform them of your legal name and mailing address. So it can be entered into the meeting records if we don't have that already. Please ensure your microphone is on mute and be mindful of what's visible in the pub to the public in your surroundings. Please note this meeting is being recorded and by continuing to be in the meeting, you're consenting to be recorded. To have lead meeting to opt out and exit the session. When it's time for the public comments, I'll address the participant by the name that was recorded with the Secretary Treasurer at the beginning of this virtual PAC meeting. Once your name has been called, please then unmute your microphone or your telephone. All persons addressing the committee shall state their full name and mailing address and must direct their comments to myself, the Chair. Decisions will be mailed or emailed to the applicant agent and to all other interested parties who provided their mailing address and or email address to the Secretary Treasurer. The notice of appeal for minor variance application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within twenty days of the making of the decision. The notice of appeal for a land division application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within twenty days of the mailing of a notice. Other than the applicant, only a specified person or public body as defined in Section One Subsection One of the Planning Act has the ability to appeal the decision made by the Canora Planning Advisory Committee to the Ontario Land Tribunal. The Secretary Treasurer for the Canora Planning Advisory Committee is Melissa Shaw and the Director of Planning and Build Building and Planning is Janice Pokelo. So we'll call this to order and ask if there are any additions to the agenda. I have no additions to the agenda. Okay, any declaration of interest by a member for this meeting or a meeting in which a member was not present? Approval of minutes for meeting held on March the twentieth, twenty four. Any comments, questions, additions? Nope, all right. So may I have a mover for the adoption, please? Chris and a second or please Renee? All in favor? Right, cute. I'm just gonna sign before I forget here. Right, any correspondence relating to applications before the committee tonight?
No additional correspondence.
Any, and any other correspondence? Seen none. Any adjournment requests?
None as of today's date.
Okay, so consideration of applications for land division and land division. So D ten twenty four oh four Frost and Mr. Thompson, you are representing this application, I understand?
How's my volume, Madam Chair? Can you hear me okay?
Thank you, yep.
Very good. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Joanne Frost. I don't think they'll be joining us today and I'm more than prepared to have Madam Director introduce the report and I can make some commentary if I think anything's missed or should be expanded upon. I just don't want to duplicate.
Okay, thank you. All right. Candace, thank you.
So this is for application D ten twenty four oh four, which is an application for consent for land division and easement. The application for consent is proposed to sever lot thirteen from lot fourteen on block thirty three, plan one eight one. At the time the report was written, I was unaware that we were also looking at a deeming bylaw to consolidate lot fourteen with the adjacent properties. So I'll be amending the report as I'm reading it somewhat. So lots thirteen and fourteen are were originally whole lots of an M plan that were deemed to be one lot. Person went to a deeming bylaw passed August twenty first, two thousand and six. There's an existing existing garage with with what was approved as a second floor workshop on lot thirteen. The workshop is to be converted into a dwelling. Building permit. K E N twenty twenty three zero zero six seven has been obtained for this conversion. Lot fourteen contains a single detached dwelling unit. And it's the proponents desire to relocate an existing retaining wall to the property boundary between the two lots. So in addition, access to lot thirteen crosses a portion of slot fourteen. So they are seeking consent for easement across that portion of lot fourteen to allow continued access to lot thirteen, which is where the garage is located. Essentially, the same application was approved on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty two, under application D ten twenty twenty two oh one. This application expired on February fifteenth due to unmet conditions, specifically the requirement for an occupancy for the conversion of the branch to a single detached dwelling and the installation of new sewer and water connections to to the garage. So with the easement that has been requested, the dominant tenant of the easement would be pin four two one five seven zero one four zero. And the survey, which would be the garage property lot thirteen, the surveying tenant of the easement is pin four two one five seven dash zero zero two nine. So referring again to the the report, the existing conditions, the subject property is on the east side of Bay Street. The lot elevation is higher than the street and the property is supported by retaining walls. Concrete stairs providing pedestrian access to lot thirteen and approach onto the city road allowance. And a new retaining wall is proposed between the two lots. Sewer and water for the garage, lot thirteen is currently obtained from the house. And so that is to be relocated to come directly from Bay Street. And which is included in the report, it shows the proposed new lot, which is the garage lot, the residual lot where the house is. And further down south of the residual lot would be the two lots fifteen and sixteen, which are going to be deemed to be one lot along with the residual. So this proposal is generally consistent with the policies of the provincial policy statement as well as the Canora official plan. The land use designation of the property is established area in which there is a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional leases. Residential development is encouraged in the established areas. The plans of subdivision fundamentally consent as infill or redevelopment. The zoning chart that's in the report would be incorrect because of the even bylaw that would see that the three lots, it's already been to one lot. So lot fourteen would actually be much more larger. Any variants that were required for rear yards are noted above and red. These were obtained through the original application. The zoning variance is not required with existing land conforming side and front yards not created through this land division. So no additional variances are required as a result of this application. The proposed consent was circulated for comment on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The city of Canora recommends the following conditions of approval. That separate sewer and water connections being installed for lot thirteen. The driveway easement for lot thirteen access be registered and a letter of comfort be obtained for the encroaching retaining wall, which would be the stairs on this property. Circulation of the notice of complete application appearing for consent for easement was completed in accordance with Section fifty three of the Planning Act, whereby it was circulated the property owners within sixty meters of the subject property and notice was posted on the subject property. Notice was also provided to the persons and public bodies as prescribed. As of today's date, no letters have been received from the public. If approved, the proposed consent would create one new lot and easement over pin four two one five seven dash zero zero two nine to address the encroachment of the driveway adjacent property. The proposed consent is supported by the policy, the provincial policy statement, the city official plan, and all necessary variances have been obtained. It is this department's recommendation that application D ten twenty four oh four for consent for lot severance and easement on the property located at five fifteen Bay Street legally described as pin four two one five seven dash zero zero two nine. And pin four two one five seven dash zero one four zero, city of Canora. The approved and provisional consent be granted subject to the following. The original executed transfer deed of land form, a duplicate original and one photoprofit for city records be provided for each parcel. A schedule to the transfer deed of land form on which is set out the entire legal description of the pins in question and containing the names of the parties indicated on page one of the transfer deed of land form be provided for each parcel. That a letter of comfort be obtained for the retaining wall and any other structures encroaching onto the municipal road. That an occupancy permit be obtained for the conversion of the garage to a single detached dwelling. That new municipal sewer and water connections be installed to provide direct service to the dwelling on the proposed newly lot. That an easement be registered on the title for the proposed southernly lot granting access in favor of the northernly lot over the area of the existing driveway. That the easement be surveyed and described on a reference plan and that a draft is provided to the planning department for free approval. That lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen on plan eighteen dot thirty two in the city of Canora are within a final subdivision registered for more than eight years and that council of the city of Canora shall be deeming by law to deeming lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Not to be right, a registered subdivision for the purposes of Section fifty part three of the Planning Act. But three original copies and one PDF copy of the reference plan of survey bearing the land registry office registration number and signatures as evidence of deposit therein and illustrating the parts to which the consent approved relates must be shown in general, same area and dimensions as the sketchable part of the application be provided. That the payment of any outstanding taxes, including penalties and interest and any local improvement charges if applicable shall be paid to the city of Canora. And that prior to endorsement of the deeds, the Secretary Treasurer shall receive a letter from the owner's agent solicitor confirming that conditions one through nine have been fulfilled. Clearance from the city of Canora and external agencies as required are to be included. And that all costs associated with extension of services, driveway installation, surveys, legal fees, and matters related to the application are the responsibility of the developer.
Mr. Thompson, do you have anything to add or comment on? On mute.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. That was a very detailed report. I think the conditions that the city set out are reasonable. One difference between the prior approved application and this application is that before we were talking about merging merging those lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen rather than addressing that issue with the deeming bylaw. I think the deeming bylaw is a better option because it brings more permanence to the to the arrangement. The merger would have been a pin consolidation, which which really wasn't a permanent solution. So I think that's that that's an improvement from the city's perspective. One maybe correction is the retaining wall that is mentioned in there, which would have been a large encroachment onto the newly created lot. That's been addressed and redesigned and now follows the property lines. So that that work has been done. The renovations on this building are seventy five to eighty percent complete. And that's pursuant to the building permit that was issued in July. And my client has also made application to the city for the sewer connection. And that application was made in September. Hasn't yet been issued for some reason, probably not a big issue because the the installation or the connection wasn't going to happen in the winter. In any event, and we needed to, we needed the the ground to thaw. But aside from that, I'm hoping this doesn't cause any contention amongst the the committee. This is essentially just a re reapproval of 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 an application that was previously presented and approved. But I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So any committee members have any questions?
So I I'm not a hundred percent clear on the deeming bylaw and how that's different than the merging of the pins. So if that could be clarified quickly.
So the the merging of the pins is simply state, when when you have your pin or or title, it has a legal description of the properties that are included. And so if you merge the pins, you would have one pin number. And it would say that you own lots. In in this case, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And then plan eighteen, block thirty two. So it would be stick, those lots are lots on a legal plan of subdivision and because it's a legal plan of subdivision, land titles could separate them again without any kind of approval. Because they're legally existing lots on a plan of subdivision. So you would have a title that included three lots. You could go back to land titles and say, I'd like to put it back on three separate lots and they could do that and you could sell them separately. When it, when we go through the deeming process, it recognizes, it overwrites that and and merges them together perfectly permanently and they couldn't go to land titles and separate them without fine approval. So it is as Mr. Thompson said, unpermanent. Which is what was done with lots thirteen and fourteen, which is why we're here separating them again. Had that not been done, they could have simply gone through land titles and separated titles.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Did have a question. I remember reviewing something in the report that said there was some concern about the eaves overhanging the existing property.
That's true. When I wrote the report, I didn't know that they that we were doing the deeming bylaw. And so the eaves of the house that are on lot fourteen were overhanging onto lot fifteen. But once we do the deeming bylaw, they they became the same property.
What's fourteen fifty, not between fourteen and thirteen?
That's good.
Okay. Concern.
So and then the letter of comfort. Has has that been applied for? Has the letter of comfort been applied for?
Uh, no, it's drafted and signed and would have been submitted with our just prior to our submission of all the condition requirements. But since we were delayed, we haven't yet submitted that.
Thanks. So but yeah, the retaining wall doesn't need to be on there any longer than, is that correct?
Well, that that's a different retaining wall. The retaining, there's
It's the one.
Well, between the two properties. So that problem has been addressed. The there are still significant retaining walls that are on the road allowance of the city.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Right, anybody from the public wish to speak to this application either for for or against this application? No? All right. May I hear the?
Certainly.
Yeah, so one thing I can, before you start. And does the committee have any problem with leaving out the administrative and and sort of legal technical conditions that are being read out and just read out the ones that we are applying there or the city is applying that? Is it, or because when Janice is reading it out, she's having to read out that we need, you know, two copies of the survey and that sort of thing. So those are things that are standard, correct? So if we leave out those standard conditions, if we just hear from, so that they don't have to read quite as much, does that sound fair?
Yep.
All right, okay.
Okay, so through you, Madam Chair, to the committee, would you like me to reread those conditions that are nonstandard? Or is, has the committee had the benefit of reading the planning report? We've made no changes to any of those conditions. Can I simply just read out the decision in your form?
You sure can.
Okay, certainly. So understanding everyone has had the opportunity to read the planning report and the conditions there within. The decision being that application D ten twenty four oh four for consent for lot severance and easement on property located at five one five Bay Street and legally just legally described as pin four two one five seven dash zero zero two nine and pin four two one five seven dash zero one four zero, city of Canora is approved and provisional consent is granted subject to the conditions outlined within the planning report.
May I have a mover, please? Eric and a second or Andrea? And on favor? You men, thank you. And that is Karen. Thanks, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I will send out notice of that decision to you tomorrow. It will be subject to that twenty day appeal period, which takes us to May seventh.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next application is?
Madam Chair? Sorry, just to confirm, I saw this side of the room, Phil. I did not see the two of yours.
It was you now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we have done Frost and we are off to D ten twenty four oh five. Myers and Charles, is there anybody who's representing that application?
That's me also, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you.
You want to do the same way we did it last time with?
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. This is application D ten twenty four oh five. Just a correction to the staff report. The number on the top of that was incorrect. It should have been oh five. So the location is one ninety two Kerr Drive. Just So this is an application of consent is proposed to create an easement over a portion of pin four two one seven four dash zero three one five to provide driveway access to an adjacent property of one eighty eight Kerr Drive. The proposed easement will address the encroachment of an existing driveway. So the dominant tenant of the easement will be pin four two one seven four through zero nine six and pin four two one seven four dash zero three one six. Again, that would be one eighty eight Kerr Drive. I'm observing ten of the easement would be pin four two one seven four dash zero three one five, one ninety two Kerr Drive. No new development would result from the creation of this easement. Both properties are located on the south side of Kerr Drive within an established rural residential subdivision adjacent to Lake River. Both properties include existing single detached dwellings and accessible structures. Those are included in the report. And it also shows the area where the driveway encroaches onto the neighboring property and that the easement is requested for. This application is generally consistent with the policy of the provincial policy statement as well as the Canora official plan. And then use designation is rural area, which includes a variety of agricultural, residential, industrial, commercial, recreation, tourism, open spaces. Residential development is restricted to single detached dwellings and relatively large lots serviced by private water and sewage. Development shall preserve the rural character and avoid densities more appropriately found in the settlement area. So this easement will not change the size or shape of the lot. It just provides a legal label to use that easement area for the driveway. The zoning is rural residential. Again, because this is an easement, there's no change to the size and shape of the easement lots. The proposed consent was circulated for comment on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. No comments or concerns were identified by various city Canora departments and the Indian departments that were received. Circulation of the notice of complete application appearing for consent for easement was completed in accordance with Section twenty three of the Planning Act whereby it was circulated to property owners within sixty meters of the subject property and notice was posted on subject property. Notice was also provided to persons and public bodies as prescribed. As of the date of this report, no letters have been received from the public. For if approved, the proposed consent would create an easement over pin four two one seven four dot zero three one five to address the encroachment of a driveway from the adjacent property. No new development is proposed. The proposed consent is supported by the policies of the provincial policy statement, the city official plan. The proposed easement does not cause noncompliance within the city of Canora zoning bylaw. And this department recommends that the application D ten twenty four oh five for consent create an easement over pin four two one seven four dash zero three one five. City of Canora be approved and provisional consent be granted subject to the following. The original executed transfer deed of land form, a duplicate original and one photoprofit of city records be provided for parcel. A schedule to the transfer deed of land form on which is set out the entire legal descriptions of the pins in question and containing the names of the parties indicated on page one of the transfer deed of land form be provided for each parcel. That the easement be surveyed and described on a reference plan and that a draft is provided to the planning department for free approval. The three copies and one PDF copy of the reference plan of survey bearing the land registry office registration number and signatures as evidence of deposit therein and illustrating the parts to which the consent approval relates must show in general the same area and dimensions as the sketch and part of the application be provided. That the payment of any outstanding taxes, including penalties and interest and any local improvement charges if applicable shall be paid to the city of Canora. But prior to endorsement of the deeds, the Secretary Treasurer shall receive a letter from the owner or the owner's agent solicitor confirming that conditions one through five have been fulfilled. Clearance from the city of Canora and external agencies as required are to be included. That all costs associated with surveys, legal fees, and matters related to the application are the responsible of the authority of the developer.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, do you have anything to add or comment on?
Just a couple of things. So thank you again, Madam Director. That was suitably succinct. Again, I think it's this is fairly noncontentious, but I did want to explain just one thing. How I got involved in this file. So the, I represent the current owners of one eighty eight Kerr Drive, which would be the property to benefit from this easement. That property is currently subject to an agreement of purchase and sale, anticipated close on May the second to new owners named Trough. And the applicant, of course, is the owners of one ninety two Brett Myers and Ally Charles. Ms. Charles is is listening in. And i- if the committee does grant provisional consent to this easement, it's entirely possible that this would never be completed, that the transfer of the easement may not occur. And that's because the parties, particularly my clients in this application, Ms. Charles and Mr. Myers. They don't want to make that final decision until they know exactly what where the property line is, what the extent of the easement is into their property, because they have some development plans. So I say that because I'm I'm quite confident. That's why Ms. Charles joined in today was that that she didn't want to have any misconception that this was a commitment on their part. She has the option, or they both have the option to never sign the Uh, she has the option or they both have the option to never sign the transfer and never affect this easement, but. Um, they're here as trying to be good neighbors, bring some legal certainty to the neighborhood. So that there's no future disputes or conflict between the uh the neighbors, if it can be uh the new the new owners of the neighboring property, if it can be avoided. But subject to that, those are all my comments, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Committee have any questions? No questions. Uh, so is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak either for or against this application? Oh, okay. Would you want to just read the?
Sure.
Resolution notes.
Again, I will the, I will read the short form resolution, understanding all members have had the opportunity to read the planning report. Uh, the draft decision, then there have been no changes to the conditions thereof. So that application D ten twenty four oh five for consent to create an easement over pin four two one seven four dash zero three one five, city of Canora is approved. And provisional consent is granted, subject to the conditions outlined within the planning report.
I think do I have a mover? Andrea and a seconder, please. Robert and all in favor? You know, yes.
So that is a carried decision. I will send notice of this decision to you tomorrow, Mister Thompson. And to your client on the line, certainly uh provide us with an email address and we will also send notice of the decision to today as well.
Well, I just, uh, before I sign off and leave you to my uh colleague, well, Miss Wheatley. Just want to express my appreciation to the planning department. Always been very responsive, helped me puzzle out solutions to problems that arise and. I think in this particular case, we submitted these applications. I think it was during March break. Uh, people are on holidays, but. Uh, they were able to uh. Uh, complete the review of the application in a timely manner. So I appreciate uh all of their efforts as as usual.
Thanks. Don't forget to put that in the notes. All right, thank you, Carrie. All right, uh, next is D ten twenty four oh six Lewis. Uh, so Ms. Wheatley, you are here to represent?
Yes, I am. And and I'm comfortable moving forwards like Mister Thompson did. If you want to present the staff report first, it's a pretty self-explanatory matter.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, uh, D ten twenty four oh six. You're going to find this is very similar. Language to the last one. This is uh an application for consent. Is proposed to create an easement over pin four two one eighty four dash zero zero one four. Provide driveway access to an adjacent property, that being four four eight East Mellett Road. So this property is an unaddressed property on East Mellett Road. The proposed easement will address the approachment of an existing driveway. The dominant tenant of the easement will be pin four two one three four dash zero two two four. Uh, and the surveyant tenant of the easement would be pin four two one three four dash zero zero one four. No new development would result from the creation of this easement. Both properties are located on the west side of East Mellett Road, north of Descendable Drive. They are located within this established rural residential subdivision adjacent to Block Sturgeon Lane. The subject property, pin four two one three four zero zero four, is two point one three hectares in size. Apart from the infotrend driveway, the lot is vacant, appearing to be largely encumbered by a market debate. The adjacent property, pin four two one three four dash zero three three four, includes an existing dwelling and accessory structure. There is an illustration in the in the report that uh identifies the. Where the easement uh for the existing driveways located. The application is generally consistent with the policies of provincial policy statement. As well as the city of Canora official plan, the land use designation of the subject property's rural area. Which includes a variety of agriculture, residential, industrial, commercial, recreational tourism, and open space uses. Residential development is restricted to similar detached dwellings on relatively large lots. Serviced by private water and sewage. Development shall preserve the rural character and shall avoid densities more appropriately found in the settlement area. In terms of the zoning bylaw, this is an easement. So it does not impact the boundaries of of the property, any um. It's the same nonconformities with the zoning bylaw are unimpacted. So no, no new premises required. The proposed consent was circulated for comment on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. No comments or concerns were identified by various city departments. Circulation of the notice of complete application and hearing for consent for easement was completed in accordance with section fifty-three of the planning act. Whereby it was circulated which property owns within sixteen meters of the subject property. Notice was posted on the subject property and notice provided to persons and public bodies as prescribed. As of the date of this report, no letters have been received from the public. If approved, the proposed consent will create an easement over pin four two one three four dash zero zero one four to provide access in this. To an adjacent property. Uh, pin four two one three four dash zero three two four, no new development is proposed. The proposed consent is supported by the policies of the provincial policy statement, the city of Canora official plan. And the easement does not cause noncompliance within the city of Canora zoning bylaw. If both parties agree, the easement could also involve. Uh, both lots to share access to East Mellett Road with the existing entrance to the property. It was not clear in the application if that was desired or if uh should development occur on. Um, the vacant lot, they could also put in their own driveway, they have evil access to East Mellett Road as well. So it is the recommendation of the department that application D ten twenty four oh six for consent to create an easement over pin four two one three four dash zero zero one four. City of Canora be approved and provisional consent be granted, subject to the following. The original executed transfer deed of land form, a duplicate original and one photoprofiling per city records be provided for each parcel. A schedule to the transfer deed of land form on which is set out the entire legal descriptions of the pins in question. And containing the names of the parties indicated on page one of the transfer deed of land form be provided for each parcel. That the easement be surveyed and described on a reference plan and that a draft is provided to the planning department for free approval. Three originals and one PDF copy of the reference plan of survey bearing the land registry office registration number. And signatures as evidence of deposit therein. And illustrating the parts to which the consent approval relates must show in general the same area and dimensions as the sketch form part of the application. That the payment of any outstanding taxes, including penalties and interest and any local improvement charges if applicable. Shall be paid to the city of Canora. That prior to endorsement of the deeds, the secretary treasurer shall receive a letter from the owner or owner's agent solicitor. Confirming that conditions one through five have been fulfilled. Clearance from the city of Canora and external agencies as required are to be included. And that all costs associated with survey, legal fees, and matters related to the application are the responsibility of the developer.
Thank you. Ms. Wheatley, do you have anything to add or comment on?
I'll just perhaps answer one of Janice's inquiries uh with regarding the servient lands and whether or not there's any intention to develop. At this time, there is not. The current owners don't have any plans to develop it. But perhaps a future owner might add a building and then there would be a shared driveway. But right now, it'll just be serving the dominant landowners.
Thank you. Maybe any questions? No. And nobody from the public. Um, all right, so um, would you mind just reading that?
Certainly, again, understanding all members have had a chance to review the planning report, the draft decisions, and there's been no changes to those conditions. The decision being that application D ten twenty four oh six for consent to create an easement over pin two four one three four dash zero zero one four. City of Canora is approved and provisional consent is granted, subject to those conditions in the planning report.
You may have a mover, please. Renee and a seconder. Andrea and all in favor? You know, yes.
So you have received that provisional approval here this evening, Ms. Wheatley, and I will send notice of that decision out tomorrow. The appeal deadline will be May seventh.
All right. Thank you very much and good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so no recommendations to council for any amendments. Um, no old business. Uh, new business. I just see a face at the table there.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to introduce Tara Vader, who is our new associate planner. Uh, she started on Monday and uh she is already uh. Making changes and and adding to our department. So uh, we're very pleased to have her on board.
Um, I'm originally from Bayfield, Ontario. Putting on to the opposite end of Ontario.
But small town. Okay, uh, and no other new business? Nope. All right, so adjourn. May I have a mover, please? Karen at uh six forty.
Sure, sweetie.
Mm-hmm. Nice thing about easements.
Thank you to members of the public online. We will now end this meeting. Have a good evening.
Say that the Bay Street House is quite an.